And you probably won't be able to see everybody. I don't think you'll see councillor Waring or councillor Rob.
I moved over.
Well, yeah, somebody can do the best part, but yeah.
I'm quite happy.
Yeah, we're not very aware of that.
Quite happy.
Well, unfortunately, it's still you're still gonna be missing somebody, so. But you can hear us okay, that that's the main thing.
That's a fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, sounds good, smart.
Okay. Alright.
Well, actually, team and chief.
And they can see you.
Good. Yep. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Sorry to bother you there, I just thought I would be the favorite person if I got yell sick.
Yeah.
No, not good timing, I guess.
Right. Why have I got no hair in this?
Are we almost ready? In one minute, you should be good. Could you get the green on there and then start reading?
Now, why is that?
Just give us a second, everybody. Councillor Martin.
What do you mean with that?
Has everybody met Iris?
I've got five.
Yeah. I did on one trick.
I have just one self when I came in.
Yeah.
I haven't, but I saw her in the parking lot.
Yes.
I didn't believe I had.
Before I let home.
Iris Burridge, so councillor Waring, councillor Dixon, Mayor Crane, councillor Gordon, councillor Martin, councillor Rob, councillor
Welcome.
And deputy mayor.
Deputy mayor Holiday.
Who's got s- much sweaters on?
These two.
We do.
These two German.
Especially we plan to come prepared. Good luck, innit?
The twins.
Was there a special arm or what? It was their special arms.
You should have told us there was a dress killer from those water like that, too.
I assume it looks smart.
I see. Yeah, I'm the darker tone, you see. You're the uh dolomite granite tone.
There you go.
Yeah.
You're live, councillor Martin. Okay. Good evening, folks. This is our council committee of the whole for Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty. The town of Turner Valley acknowledges that we are on the traditional territories of the people of the Treaty Seven, including the Black Blackfoot Confederacy members, Sisipka, Tanyi, and Kameini?
Kainai.
Kainai.
K- Kainai, pardon me. First Nations, the Stony Dakota of Bear Spock, Cheniki, and the Westu First Nations, the Dinani, Ausutina First Nations, and the Maiti Nation, Regency Three. So we're gonna call this meeting to order uh so six thirty-one. Uh adoption of the agenda. Can I get somebody to adopt the agenda?
I have one addition, if I might. Chair Martin?
Yes.
Like a closed session at the end?
Okay. So that will be seven point one?
Like section? Twenty-four?
Seven point one, section twenty-four. Section twenty-four, okay. So can we have adoption of the agenda with the amendment?
I'm gonna do.
Councillor Dixon? All in favor? Uh we don't happen to have any delegations today. So we're gonna go into bylaw and policies. Item four point one, property responsibility bylaw number twenty dash one one zero seven. Amendment, RFD, property responsibility bylaw amendment, PFD. So.
Mayor and the chair of the committee.
Present.
Uh Sean? No, this was written by Lisa. C A O patient.
Thank you, Chair Martin. So this was brought forward as a result of a notice of motion brought forward by councillor Waring in regards to potential amendments to the property responsibility bylaw twenty one one zero seven. So we have provided you a copy of the bylaw in the particular section that councillor Waring was interested in having amended. And uh obviously administration has spoken to councillor Waring. And discussed the complications involved with his potential motion to amend the requirement to maintain properties adjacent to residential properties in urban reserve districts. As a great majority of municipal lands are actually urban reserve. So in speaking to councillor Waring, I had suggested that if the issue was noxious weeds, we could just simply direct the weed inspector to ensure that he inspects those particular areas around the condominiums on Imperial Drive. Councillor Waring seemed satisfied with that, and I'm not sure if he's willing to withdraw his motion, and council can't do it at the committee of the whole, obviously. But I will leave that to councillor Waring to speak to.
Oh, yeah, hi. Good evening. Um the way you've um rephrased all this is quite good, I think, and I don't particularly want to uh withdraw my notice of uh motion in that um the um wording that's been suggested in this uh request for decision, I would be quite happy to see go forward.
That's certainly a prerogative.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Send me up there.
Oh, uh pardon me, deputy mayor.
Yeah, I'm not really in favor of this um removing urban reserve and
She's lost you both.
requiring people to mow what's very large tracts of land. Um they would have to be refined somehow to be like small sections right bordering residential, not just a blanket making everybody in urban reserve have to mow and maintain their places, 'cause a lot of it's being used for grazing land, so you'd want the grass to grow up to certain height before you let out a lot, so.
With respect, deputy mayor, you'll find if you read it properly, it says that.
That's my thought. Not in you just remove you removed up in the RFD, it looks like you're just removing urban reserve from being exempt.
It says clearly in my copy that owners of urban reserve lands have the responsibility to maintain any land adjacent to residential property.
Uh.
So if it's not adjacent to residential property, not just one house but properties, then there's no problem.
The the adjacent to private premises relates only to town lands, public lands. Urban reserve are public lands. They're privately owned. Um so I I think the wording needs to be tweaked. And then you would have to give a certain like what's acceptable distance, right? If you have ten acres, are you expecting them to maintain the entire ten acre except borders?
I think we're being a bit silly here. The idea is not clear ten acres. The idea is if your property is urban reserve
How are we in order?
and it butts up against residential properties, like the urban reserve next to where I live, then the intention is that that urban reserve owner is responsible to keep a strip of land next to the residential properties clean and clear, weeds and lawn grasses exactly the same as I have to do against my next door neighbor.
So for how big of a piece, like how wide of a strip along that are you asking for? And I don't think I think I'm right in how I'm reading it. You're just you're not giving you're not doing what I think you're intending to do with this motion.
Councillor Waring, do you have any more to add?
Um well, the whole the whole point of this property bylaw when we did it was partly for fire control as well as what looks nice and weed control. Now, we all are aware that the number of grass fires that are going on at the moment in n- not as in today, because there's eight feet of snow out there, but there is a lot of problems with grass fires, global warming, et cetera, et cetera. And several times this year in residential areas in in the Calgary area, the fire brigades have been out stopping grass fires. Now, where I live, as an example, and there are others like where Mr. Rab lives as well, there are great rafts of grassland which are not controlled at all. There's no fire breaks, there's no anything. And we did hear from our emergency services and our fire brigade that we should be more aware of these problems and do something about it. So, that's why I asked for this changes to be made. One was to do with the noxious weeds, which apparently I don't need to change it for noxious weeds, which at one time I was told I did. And the second is still the problem of uncontrolled vegetation that could be a fire risk. Now, if we can't sort this out by the next meeting, that's fine, then um it'll go forward and go forward. So, I mean, I'm not gonna withdraw my motion. I I genuinely believe something has to be done on this. People that own property next to residential areas should be responsible to keep it cleaned up and tidy. End of my plea.
And the same goes for developments of where their grass is not cut.
Yeah, but the developments that are 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 only when they're termed urban reserve. The developments when the developments are co- are controlled by the development permit. As far as I'm aware, that they have to keep.
But they but the developers need to maintain the grass. They need to keep it cut.
Which. Yeah.
And they should not have the noxious weeds.
Correct.
And you and the situation over in Anderson Crescent was that way.
Yeah, but they were breaking their development permit agreement that's separate from this.
Yep, no, uh totally true, and
But if a developer buys land, like Dr. Green, for example, and like the people who own the Carne Gateway lands and wanna sit on it for the next hundred years while it gains property value, and they're not interested in developing, the least they can do is make the place tidy. I'm not going after the farmers down the lower end of the town with their sheep and things like this. It's the the lands are immediately adjac- adjacent to what is considered residential property, like Bailey Ridge, like our condos, like where Mr. Rab lives, that big field behind him.
Yes.
And I don't care whether it's owned by the town or it's owned by somebody else, it should be kept properly maintained.
It's privately. Uh councillor Gordon?
Yeah, I think after listening to the discussion, I think there's actually two different elements here. And I think the first element is the importance of, as it's written in option one, that those lands that are adjacent uh to this urban reserve, um depending on lot size, I think there should be a setback that is expected to be maintained. And then there's a separate section, which you've identified councillor Waring, regarding fire control. And I think that should be fall- fallen or a completely separate article, because then we can put those expectations on that as a separate uh entity alone. 'Cause the way it's written now, the focal point seems to be on the noxious weeds, the focal point seems to be more on uh maintaining a property that is sightly. And so I think we should actually open this up in because it's open, it's on the floor. And I think we should actually add an element here to consider uh including an article for fire control. Because we, as you mentioned, we do have several properties that are quite a large size, that uh there's no controls in place. We've had that conversation with our director of emergency management in our emergency advisory committee meetings, should we be more concerned about a a an urban fire? So I I think that's you opened up a a separate article, in my opinion. Because I I like the clarity. I I think the way it's written in option one, that council direct administration amend the property responsibility by by law be by removing these words, I think there needs to be an expectation, uh if we completely remove it, then if we have a parcel of land that's urban reserve, let's say it's twenty-five acres, are they expected to maintain that entire acre from a sightly property perspective or a fire perspective? So I would I would open up the door for having a setback for neighboring properties, whatever is adjacent. Five meters, that gives you what? Fifteen feet, give or take, maybe eighteen feet, that that has to be maintained. But I would love to see something specific about a fire, urban fire control piece in here. That's my opinion.
Councillor Rob, and then uh deputy deputy mayor?
Yeah, with all due respect, uh Madam Chair, I I think talking about a development uh a development as you as you alluded to is different from what we're talking about here, so I think we have to keep the two separate. And yes, maybe there's an issue with development, it's nothing to do with with councillor Waring ones, I don't believe. But my point is, I look at the area behind me, which is everywhere, it's probably twenty some acres in there.
That's what I'm getting at.
Uh maybe we need to look at a buffer zone, and I can pick it up with councillor Gordon says. Maybe we don't expect them to maintain the whole works, but we do need a buffer zone now. Currently, my neighbor has established that buffer zone, he just cuts about, you know, thirty or forty feet behind us, nice and neat, 'cause he's a a neat freak, thanks, and I'm glad he likes to get out and do things, but it's it's great.
Wow.
It's a nice buffer, but if the whole area was buffered, it'd be a lot better, so. Maybe you don't want the whole urban reserve to be dealt with, but you want a buffer so it looks neat and it's a a fire hazard. So I think we got more work to do in this before before I would support it totally, councillor Waring, and yet I understand where you're coming from.
I've always ever asked for a buffer zone, a strip alongside residential areas. That was all. I never asked for the whole of the urban reserve to be considered.
But that's that's what we had, I think councillor, yeah.
E- even in the wording when I put it together as a as a request, as a for a motion,
Yeah, yeah.
I never asked for the whole of that the urban reserve. This is something deputy uh holiday brought up, because she owns a huge tract of urban reserve.
Okay, okay. I think Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. But I like the thought of a buffer zone, so maybe we need to have some speci- specifics given to our administration, some direction to administration on this on a buffered area, as opposed to
And we did have the discussion when the original bylaw went through, and somehow or other we passed it with the wrong wording in, but that's been known to happen in the confusion of debate.
Can't believe that, no.
Deputy mayor?
Yeah. And I absolutely am supporting a buffer. That's not the problem, John. The problem is that the motion as it currently stands just removes urban reserve, the exemption that we have right now on ma- maintain our grass. Um so you just you I mean, it's more land in urban reserve than there is land in anything else in town. These are huge pieces of land that you're just blanket removing the exemption for without public consultation. That's a problem. If we're talking about a buffer, I totally support that, but we have to get the wording right for that. Uh the piece of land behind Gary Robb's house isn't even a part of this discussion, 'cause it's already zoned R one. It already has to maintain the grass, and if they're not, that is a bylaw enforcement issue, and it's not gonna be helped by what we're doing here tonight. I also wanna bring up the fact that fire generally moves with the wind, which is west to east. Um the empty lands and everything that borders the majority of the town laying to the west is also an issue that's not going to be helped by changing your urban reserve on a, you know, all these eastern pieces or southern pieces. So I think we have to just pay attention to what we're actually trying to accomplish and use wording in a bylaw that's actually gonna accomplish what we're looking for, which is a buffer, which we needed to determine what the proper size is. Is it ten meters? Is it fifty meters? Um and we have to way figure out a way to write it in the motion so that you're not just removing the whole urban reserves exemption. You're just you're creating a new a new wording, I guess, so that's all I'm saying. It's not ready to come back until at least I wouldn't go in favor of it until it comes back that way.
Which is exactly what we requested administration to do at the last discussion on this, and it was supposed to come back, and I have to be honest, I obviously didn't read this properly. But it doesn't say what we wanted it to say, so I apologize for that. But certainly, I'm still hundred percent supportive of a change in the bylaw that brings in a control strip adjacent to residential properties. And I'm sure we can word that properly.
Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, if I may, I'm just wondering if I can ask administration if they've looked at this bylaw and how it relates to bylaws in Black Diamond with amalgamation coming up in in six weeks. I'm a little little hesitant to be looking at rewriting bylaws at this particular point, and just wondering if 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 uh if there's been any 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 look at if it will or it coincides with what Black Diamond currently has. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
I guess the quick answer to your question, councillor Dixon through the chair, is no, we haven't looked at it. And I would clearly have to apologize to council, because after speaking to councillor Waring, I w- I did no more work on this, because I believed it was going to be withdrawn, so. Uh clearly, we're going to need to find, what does it mean adjacent to residential properties, because urban reserve does allow residential development. Uh councillor Holiday is a prime example of that. Does that mean the property next to her has to be maintained? Or her property has to be maintained? There's there's clearly some definitive issues here that I think we wanna be very cautious of, because this relates to a great piece of our municipality, and this could be a major enforcement problem. So I, like I say, I have to apologize. I did no further effort on this particular piece for that reason. We're happy to do it, but I do think we uh we're gonna need some direction in terms of definition, or this is gonna come back three or four times, and I will say in all sincerity, we don't have time right now to bring bylaws back two or three times. So if if I could get some very definitive direction, I'm happy to s- you know, to do what we need to do or what council would direct us to do with this. I wanna be clear. Excuse me. In councillor Waring's case, for instance, he has property that borders an urban reserve property. What do you do with properties, urban reserve properties that border each other? How do you ma- how do you now? Would how do you define that? What what the control mechanism would be required, so? Uh just questions, and I think if we had some definitive direction. What's written right now is just simply removing it, which essentially means urban reserve properties need to be maintained like R one properties, and I don't think that's the direction that
Yeah.
we were given originally. So just some clarity would be helpful in administrative perspective.
In in the event that deputy mayor holiday and similar people subdivide the urban reserve into three or four or five or six acre lots,
How how's the way?
which then remain as urban reserve, it's not the same as being a neighbor of an urban reserve as being a neighbor of a residential area. And that's the key. It's residential area, it's not a single home in the middle of a great big huge field. So I I think if we wanna be silly about it, we can be silly forever and it'll never get done. But I don't see the problem to introduce a statement in this particular bylaw that says owners of urban reserve property that abound residential zones should keep a strip of X meters wide clear alongside the boundary. That's all. Now, if that's gonna be a problem to word, then I I can't see it. Hmm.
So do we send this back to administration?
Yeah, send me up there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, deputy holiday.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at the map. S- so really where we're talking about, because we're not talking about anything owned by the town, um so that knocks out Bailey Ridge, 'cause that's town owned land, but so there's two lots up on Sunrise that are adjacent to urban reserve. There's a little house on the corner on Dunham that's urban reserve that techni- has a little plot abutting it. And then there's Seclusion Valley, which is that's a pretty that like that's down in the creek area. And then there's the piece by you, John. Other than that, like I think the golf course maintains pretty well around Royal Light. Um so I I'm assuming it's just Seclusion Valley, the two lots on Sunrise, and your strip of land that that we're gonna be addressing. Is that correct?
Buffer zone away, yeah.
Right. Yeah, it would just have to be very, very clear that it's urban reserve for X amount of meters abutting R one.
We can't say R one, because it's you can get uh residential that's not R one.
Melistic commercial as well.
Well, then you have the issue as to, you know, there's residential on o- other you are lot, so the what Sean brought up. So I think it has to be specific to where it's abutting R one or R two.
Yeah.
Town density areas.
Yeah. Exactly. It's not so difficult.
Mayor Crane?
Yeah, I um I could support a buffer zone. Um I think councillor Gordon mentioned five meters or fifteen feet. I think that's a fair amount. Um one thing I'd I'd probably like cross-reference uh would be a conversation with our fire department, because I know that they do have setbacks. I remember our emergency services manager Jerry uh speaking about uh fire breaks in regards to grass fires and the equipment that they have set up. Um it leads into a bit of a larger conversation with what do you do with M D that borders the town to the west, so I like the fact that people are thinking about that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um but for for this specific, because this is within our realm of control, the conversation with the M D is a different beast altogether. Um I could support a a buffer, and I could support the usage of residential properties, if you wanna label it R one or two, that's fine. Um and I think that was it. Um yeah, the conversation with fire to come up with a a a buffer zone that's that's adequate.
If it's a necessary Mm.
Um and and then away you go. So yeah, I I could support a buffer zone, moving it forward with a buffer zone, more information, something to that effect.
Mm.
So, yeah, that's all for me.
Anything else? So it's a direction to administration to?
Waring?
Waring, the one in
Councillor Waring?
Basically, the direction to administration would be to review the bylaw and introduce wording that where urban reserve is immediately adjacent to um residential areas, then there should be a buffer strip kept in accordance with the bylaw.
Yeah.
As termed in the bylaw anyway, or what they're supposed to do when they're in those areas.
Have defined it. Something to that effect.
That's uh
And working with the town of Black Diamonds.
I don't think they have one.
Nothing to do with Black Diamond. They don't even have this bylaw.
Or they don't have one.
It has everything to do with Black Diamond. We're amalgamating in six weeks. What are we talking about?
I I guess um councillor Dixon
Makes no sense.
I think it all depends on, you know, how much urban reserve do they have over there?
That's
Well, either way, we're still gonna be a brand new community in six weeks, so talking about a bylaw that's relevant to Turner Valley, to me, doesn't make any sense. That's just my opinion. We gotta get out of this whole idea of separate towns. That's all I'm trying to get at.
It's not them and us.
Um when we're amalgamating, I will still be living in Diamond Valley, and I will still have an urban reserve next to my houses, not getting cleaned.
I'm gonna pass that So be it. I I'm not disagreeing with you.
And it's still fire risk, so.
Motion, councillor Waring, I'm disagreeing with that.
If they don't have this bylaw, they can adopt it as for the top ten.
On it, please.
Uh Mayor Crane? Oh, oh, deputy mayor, I'm sorry.
Uh
Yeah, all the urban reserve would be for the newly annexed land, which is wouldn't be, it wouldn't have roads and other things for the most part.
No.
Well, actually, no, they would have bought some residential areas, but it does have an application. And and I have to agree with Curtis in the fact that we have to merge these bylaws and re-adopt them all come January, so why are we making administration do this work right now? Um we've there's so many things that we've put on our our shorthanded list of things that we want considered. This to me is one of them. I know of them that there's some interest on councillor Waring. He wants it done now, because he's not standing for reelection. But there's been so many things that we've pushed off to give administration more time, and this could easily be another one of those that I that just gets me to note of, and we when we go redo the bylaw come spring, we take care of it then.
This bylaw will be If in a f- in effect after amalgamation like all bylaws, and there is we can continue individual bylaws according to municipal affairs. We don't have to merge bylaws immediately And there is we can continue individual bylaws according to municipal affairs. We don't have to merge bylaws immediately. We don't have to give all this extra work to administration. We just change the bylaw and it sits there quietly and when administration get around to doing the lesser important bylaws, merging them, maybe it's in three years from now, then it'll get changed. So please don't give me this. It's too much work and I'm leaving council there for I have to push it through. I believe you did that with your land, so come on, let's not call it pot of kettle.
Counselor Gordon?
I've just done a little bit of research unless I I I can't find whether or not Black Diamond even has a property responsibility bylaw.
They don't.
It seems to me looking at their land use bylaw that much of their land use bylaw deals with what their expectations are on their property. Um they've had a truckload of amendments regarding that. Most recently, the issues with the manner in which they can park their RVs and when or not, even that they can do that. So on this point, I actually support Counselor Waring in getting this change made now because this is an issue that uh is uh important for us to have a bylaw on the books regarding property and our responsibility, the expectations we have as a community. Uh I've gotta be careful how I word this, but in our campaign a year ago, this came up on numerous occasions about having sightly or unsightly property. And I think it's wise for us to get this in place before uh the uh end of the year. That's my opinion.
Counselor Rob?
Well, I guess um we've been pushing stuff off because we don't wanna put undue burden on our administration. But this may not be that tough to do really. It's just a matter of getting a buffer zone for urban reserve properties. So uh correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Patience, but this may be a fairly easy fix to get this. Am I correct or am I incorrect? If we if we understand what we really want and I think what we really want is to say urban reserve, you ha ju just provide a buffer along re group of residential properties. I think that's what John is calling for.
Yep.
C A O.
Nope. Yep.
C A O Patience.
I I I'm still curious as to how we handle residential properties within urban reserve districts. Because I don't wanna uh I I would rather council not go down the path of a bylaw that's gonna have challenges when we go to enforce it. That's all I'm saying. And if there's clear direction, I'm fine with that. Certainly I'm happy to always accommodate council, but s uh I I would ask, uh and I'm gonna use Counselor Holiday's property, I apologize, as an example. But she has a neighbor that has a residence on it and her residence. So what do we do with that? Just so I'm clear because.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Absolutely nothing because they're acreages, huge big acreages. Not rows of houses where people live next to each other. Urban sprawl.
But.
So how do we define that? Do we define it as R one? Do we define it as commercial? Uh and you understand where I'm coming. I'm not trying to be difficult. I can just see the problem with this upon enforcement of it. I know exactly what Counselor Waring is saying. He'd like the buffer behind his property. I get that. It's just because it's urban reserve, how do we define what is adjacent to urban? What is residential property adjacent to urban reserve? That's all I'm asking.
At the end of the day, I have to maintain my property. I have to maintain my property under this bylaw. If it's urban reserve, I don't. So therefore, if my urban reserve runs up to a neighbor who who lives in an area where he has to abide by the bylaw, then it makes no sense at all that on this fence next to this gentleman, I have to maintain it, but on this fence, because it's urban reserve, you don't. You either have to maintain this stuff or you don't have to maintain it. And if you've got thirty acres with a house in the middle of it, it's ridiculous that anybody would think that the idea is you're gonna complain 'cause there's a weed in the middle of that thirty acres while the grass is long. I mean, it it's just you put it you're putting up objections which are ludicrous in my opinion. It's common sense that what is residential. One house in twenty acres is not residential. It's a it's an acreage development area. Twenty or thirty houses in a row alongside a huge big field, that's twenty or thirty houses with a border that should be maintained. If we can't sort that out, then I'm glad I'm leaving.
C A O Patience.
So could we define it as urban reserve areas adjacent to resident R one, R two, R three or commercial districts? Would that satisfy? I'm just uh I'm not trying to be a problem child. I'm just trying to get definition because I don't wanna see this come back again because we haven't done it correctly the first time, that's all.
Deputy Mayor Holiday?
Yeah, it couldn't be commercial district. That would mean you'd be fighting with Conoco to mow the land around their library or the spray park lots or whatever.
Be good.
Um so and and use that to raise horses. Uh I do worry the thought that this is even though we create the rule, is this going to get enforced? Um obviously, Counsel Rob, they have that rule and that land behind him and it hasn't been getting enforced there. Um even though they have to maintain that 'cause they're R one. Uh and I also worry about, you know, the town owns the whole buffer strip, the environmental reserve and behind Bailey Ridge. So we're saying that people that own U R have to keep a buffer strip, but the town doesn't have to keep a buffer strip behind Bailey Ridge.
I don't know if you're familiar with the land behind.
So we could push that for the night.
Oops, sorry.
Right on.
I don't know if you're familiar particularly with the land behind Bailey Ridge, which is environmental reserve. It's also a uh cliff face, an old riverbank. It's full of trees and bushes and god knows whatever. It's um it's the same as the riverbank going all the way along the Sheep River on 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 our side as well. But I I I mean, that's just.
It's not that much different than for fire issue than what you would have behind your place.
Yeah, yeah, the fires could.
It would actually be worse. So if we're worried about fire, then wouldn't the town be responsible to, if that's really the excuse, the reason that we're going with, why would the town get an exemption?
If if the um if the fire chief is of the opinion that that those those areas are a fire risk, then he can ask the town to clean them. At any rate, he doesn't need a bylaw. We've we've got a huge number of trees behind our house, but it's not the trees we're complaining about.
So it's long grass? Is that the complaint?
It's the grasses and the weeds and and when we complain about it, nobody does anything about it. And then they say, okay, but the noxious weeds can be controlled. Well, the control person came out and didn't do it. But then they got the golf course to control the weeds on the other side, but not on our side. Like it it's just crazy. All we're asking is that the person that owns the land next to us and similar locations like ours is responsible to keep those areas in line with this bylaw. And if it means it's a strip because it's urban reserve, oh, five meter strip, fine, go for it. Not asking for anything unreasonable. I'm not asking you to cut all your thirty, forty acres.
So do they graze? Are they grazing it behind you or do they keep?
They are not grazing behind me 'cause it's a double fence. They're grazing on the pipeline right away areas and into uh the lands be behind there. But if you look at it, there are two fences. One, which is the fence of the condo property on the west and then about twenty meters away, there's another fence and it's behind that fence is where they graze. Except when they break through the fence and then they come in our garden, but that's another problem.
Sounds like you need to offer to uh take down some fences for.
Counselor Gordon?
No, I had nothing.
Oh, okay. C O C A O Patience, do you have any comments?
No, um uh again, I'm happy to do whatever council would like. I was just looking for some clear direction on what a residential area is and how we're gonna define it, right? So the land use map clearly defines R one, R two and R three districts. Um I'm happy to take any direction council has. I just I think if we leave it loose, we're just opening ourselves up to interpretation and we shouldn't do that in the bylaw.
The request is always for residential. It's never for commercial, only residential.
Should we, yeah, okay. Should we be asking um the fire chief what their recommendation would be?
I can certainly consult. I believe she did offer an opinion on the the grasses earlier this year. I just don't have it at my fingertips. Uh and I'm certainly, if please, if I might, not adjunct to this. I just I just think that if we don't define it, we're we're gonna set ourselves up for interpretation and I think if we do that, it's just gonna be a great challenge as then it'll come back again. So if we can do it right the first time, I'm fine with that.
No, totally understand. Mayor Crane?
Yeah, I think this has been a great discussion. Um I think we need to uh have administration bring it back with a little more clarity. Um I would say there's two things that need to happen. Residential is uh defined as R one, R two and R three. That pretty much clears it right up, I would say. Um period and stop. And a conversation with the fire chief uh to see if there's any recommendations uh or thoughts that they believe would be relevant. Um leaving out the M D conversation entirely for this purpose. Um so yeah, residential to be defined as R one, R two and R three. That way, commercial and so on is off the books. And a conversation with the fire chief and bring it back at the next meeting and we can discuss what has been found out. That'd be about it. That'd be my definitions.
C A O Patience.
Well. I guess we can do our best. Our next meeting for us is a day and a half from now. When the agenda has to go like.
Sorry, I I'm I I just say that in in general terms, you know what I mean?
First meeting in December.
There, first meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you did we get a motion, a clear one that we can move forward?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we get a motion? Is that you, Counsel Waring?
We we can only direct, it's still come to council. We can't direct administration at this meeting.
But uh. But uh.
Recommend to council.
So we can recommend to council that they pass the motion so that tracked at the next meeting. I think.
First meeting in December.
Yep.
'Cause we can't pass the motions here.
No, it's our recommendations.
No, we don't.
You can pass a motion, sorry.
You.
Can't, we can't pass a motion.
When pass a motion.
You you.
You can. You just can only recommend to council and it'd be a motion.
Yeah, that's for me. You can only recommend to council to pass a motion to direct you. We can't direct you here.
Except that, be recommended.
No, that's correct. Well.
Well, the committee can direct administration to prepare this for the first meeting in December.
That's correct. And to
Hmm.
to develop a buffer zone along R one, R two and R three areas adjacent
To urban reserve.
to urban reserve with a five meter buffer strip to be maintained along R one, R two, R three areas adjacent to urban reserve land. Is that where we're at right now?
Yep.
Yep.
Where urban urban reserve land has to.
Yeah.
Urban reserve adjacent to R one, two or three.
I think urban reserve land has to keep a five meter buffer if they're adjacent to R one, R two or R three. You sort of said it the other way around. I think it's uh urban reserve responsible for keeping a buffer zone
To R one, R two, R three. Yes.
if it's adjacent to R one, R two, R three.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the base I think we're looking for.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Only for.
Like us to do that. So all in favor?
Uh before.
Who made that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Me.
As was there a weed
Counsel Waring?
to be added in there?
The weeds are already covered.
Hardly to do, they're supposed to do the weeds safe.
Weeds are already covered.
So, okay.
So then you put it in.
Yeah, sorry.
That's like the noxious weed program.
And we're good. Okay, we call it home.
So Counsel Waring's motion, can you please repeat it? A recommendation?
Okay.
You have a vote if we.
This is not Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Nisa.
I was just about to do it.
That the committee directs administration to amend the by, pardon me, the property responsibility bylaw, section five, one point two to include that all urban reserve properties adjacent to any residential areas defined as R one, R two and R three provide a buffer zone of five meters.
Was a recommendation from the fire department? Any recommendation? No? Okay.
No.
We can include that in our R F D and but comparisons if what Black Diamond has in there as well.
No. But the council.
Okay. So I'll call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Dixon?
You're opposed.
I oppose because I think this is silly.
And and Counsel Waring.
I'm talking to Counsel Rabbit.
R four.
I can always agree.
It's carried.
It's carried.
It's carried.
Okay, let's go for
Moving on.
request for a decision, off-site levy bylaw number twenty-two dash one one three two as amended.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess we've given the first reading?
Well, are you gonna recommend it to council?
If I may, Chair Martin?
Yes.
So this uh bylaw has been given first reading at public hearing that's been held on October nineteenth. And there was a couple of questions regarding potential amendments to this bylaw in regards to the return or refund of off-site levies. And those sections were redrafted by M P and they're in sections eight point two to eight point four shown in red in response to council's request for those amendments. So they are contained within this amended schedule attached to the bylaw essentially. And we would look for council to consider recommending this bylaw for second and third reading at the next council meeting on November sixteenth.
And does this align with the town of Black Diamonds bylaw, off-site levy bylaw?
No, it doesn't and it never was intended to. Uh it's very specific to specific tracks of land, similar to our land use bylaw. And it will be in place until such time as it's rescinded or amended. Um even if we had a joint off-site levy bylaw, those pieces of land, those development areas would be considered specific and have specific levies applied to each of them based on the infrastructure requirements for expansion. So no.
I guess what my question is, is in regards to the refund and um this section eight point two, eight point three and eight point four. I understand about the site levy, um portion of the off-site levy, but refunds and stuff like that, reflection?
I really don't know what they've done with their bylaw. They were developed by different engineering firms. Um
Yeah.
and I don't, I believe they had theirs up for.
They did.
Yeah, theirs was up on the same night as ours and that's why we didn't do the final reading.
Yeah, they just had it at their meeting last week and they believed it did it.
They just did it at the last meeting.
Yeah, and that's why we we did.
Which was different to ours.
Yeah.
Let me check. I'll just give me a minute. Take a quick.
Yeah.
Um ours didn't go for second or reading because of the unattractive environment. So.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we wanted to make sure that everything else was in alignment. Was that not correct?
No, they're not aligned.
No, these bylaws were never aligned. These were developed completely separately.
Because each site is different.
Because they were done in completely different tracks.
No, we did not.
By two by two different, two different, two different companies with different marching orders. That's where.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a different.
Yeah. Counselor Gordon?
Yes, with a couple of things. Follow up to to clarify. Black Diamond introduced their off-site bylaw levy change because they were not administering their off-site levies correctly. So therefore, they had to bring forward that change. Uh there was never the design, if you recall from our J F A C meetings, to align them because the very fact is uh they were um amended for different purposes. Now, coming back to section eight point on the payment of levies, this would've been in my response or my question about um something that our our engineers stated about off-site levies. Once they're submitted and paid, they belong to the town and can't be refunded. So I'm assuming now that you've um got legal advice, indeed off-site levies are refundable. If I'm reading that correctly in eight point two articles alpha through delta, correct? And that is what we are looking at now, correct? Mr. Patience, correct me if I'm wrong that so really as much as we hoped off-site levies were not refundable, then that's what our engineer had told us at the time. If I'm reading this correctly, if these conditions are met, then Delta tells us that hey, the off-site levy paid as a condition uh shall be refunded to the party who paid the off-site levy if the preceding three conditions and ors were uh were met. Is that correct?
So yes, and I have not checked legal on this. I left this to our engineers and we have just gotten this back. So you're seeing what I'm seeing? If I'm gonna put an R F D together to bring this to our next council meeting, I will pass these clauses by legal to ensure they're correct. I'm going, I don't wanna make an assumption, but it did take them a while to put these together, so.
Yeah, and and I've gotta be careful how I word this. And that's why I asked the question at the time, because in the last five years I've heard on occasion, and then in our last meeting with with our engineering firm, uh it was thrown out there that off-site levies are non-refundable, so on and so forth, so um treading carefully, that's a that's a bit of a miss.
Yeah.
To now find after some research that, oh, they are refundable, sorry. So I think um that puts me on guard, I'm not gonna lie.
No, no, fair, well, man.
No. Uh Deputy Mayor Holliday?
Yeah, along the same lines as Jonathan Gordon though, uh but in in uh what is it, eight point two D? Um it says the refund request must be submitted within twelve months of the date of payment, so you get
It's not worded well.
somebody with a subdivisional approval or a development permit that they pay the levies, have the development permit, some of those are for two years, and then at this, you know, two years later they decide
Thank you.
that it's not viable, whatever, they'll come back for extensions, they've already missed the twelve months, so
That's.
Mm-hmm.
like there's not many situations, yeah, I don't know, that
It's it's poorly written.
that twelve months seems weird, um.
We didn't miss, you don't have to pay it back.
Poorly written.
Past twelve months since he paid it.
I can't I can't hear John at all and I can't I couldn't hear Lisa when she talked earlier either.
Sorry, it's um it's just uh when you read this legally, i- i- if he's waited twelve months and not applied for it back, then he can't get it back. It's a redundant phrase.
Yeah, I just wonder, 'cause sometimes development permits I think are two years, right? So
Mm-hmm.
Poorly written.
Yeah.
Mayor Crane?
So.
Yeah, Mister Robb.
So just following up on Councilor Gordon and Deputy Mayor Cindy's um observations. So if we were told by our engineering firm at our last meeting that non-refundable, where did this come from?
It came from them.
So this came from them now, so this is what they're
I believe I got this Thursday afternoon, so we were pounding this together to get this on this agenda, so I definitely will check with legal before it goes to your council. Is this what you were looking for though, is this the clause you were looking for?
Can I follow up on that real quick?
Please, yeah.
The clause I was looking for was actually very clearly stated in our last meeting, based on I P I and I P E saying no refund, I said I want that in the clause. And then now to get these uh highly irregular, three articles with four sub clauses stating that actually they are refundable when it doesn't make sense within the time limits that they've been given, I'm really, I I'm bemused and befuddled.
Fair, fair comment.
Because this is nowhere near the expectation, and when I read this when we first got it, I was like, wait a minute.
What did we ask?
You told us they were not refundable, you were to come back with a very clear article stating it was not refundable, and to get three separate articles with four sub articles? That is so foreign to the advice that was given us. So I'm actually very, I I'm I'm glad, disappointed, but I'm glad that actually we got this clarity, that in fact their advice was incorrect. Call of speech is paid.
Councilor Robb?
I agree. And uh however, when I read this, I don't see any clarity here at all.
Right.
It says where an off-site levy opposed pursuant to this bylaw is repaid and the subject development firm is not issued, development firm expires,
Or.
subject division approval expires without plan, subject development and subdivision does not proceed, or
Right.
the off-site levy was paid in error. The off-site levy is paid as a condition of the development firm and subdivision, so we find it is paid. See, that's just garbage from what we heard and that and I mean there's there's when you a person can sit on a permit for three years and all of a sudden say, I'll get my money back, I don't want this anymore. That's not acceptable. So I totally agree with you, this is garbage, so we gotta deal with their with M P, whoever wrote this, 'cause this is not acceptable.
Cindy's house.
Deputy Mayor Holliday?
Should I tell you whatever you think? No?
Where are you at?
Yeah. Um I'm just wondering about that section that says the twelve months refund, does that only apply to D or does that apply to K?
Yeah.
Well, that's it, you don't know, there's no clarity here.
It seems to apply to all because there's and ors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like it's terribly confusing.
Yeah, so that's
It's like pushing a rope uphill, come on.
Yeah, we don't also talk anywhere else in the off-site levy about categories being paid for some and not for others and how that works.
Mm-hmm.
Um if we can get that, 'cause we mentioned it here
In number four.
um and I know M G A you can't you can't charge an off-site levy for a service you don't get.
Right.
Um I'm just wondering how that gets tracked though, 'cause it sometimes a property gets developed and then it's like years later that they come and do something again, um
Mm-hmm.
Question.
Just wondering how that works, but um.
If I might?
C O Patience?
We were going to place this onto the November sixteenth agenda, and I'm gonna pull it back off of there and send this entire section to legal and have them interpret it.
Sixteenth.
I'd hoped I hadn't had to do that, but I'm absolutely clear on the angst of council. And it actually relates to another issue I'm currently dealing with and I can kill two birds with one stone, so does council have any issues, they don't see this back till your first meeting in December?
Let's get it right.
Right on.
Uh Councilor Robb?
It does say the refund request must be submitted to the C E O within twelve months of the date of payment to the off-site levy, so if somebody drags on for two or three years, they they're still, their their windows pass, so I guess that's a
Right.
a bit of a cover, but it's not it's not a well-written piece at all, eight point two, that doesn't make sense to me personally.
If if you, if I can follow up on that, here here's my opinion on that one. If you're gonna offer a refund, the only article that needs to be stated is that very last sentence underneath the paragraph underneath article D. If you're gonna offer a refund, get rid of the conditions, get rid of the and ors. Uh offsite off-site levies are refundable upon request within twelve months of the date of payment. End of story.
They have to reason, they can't just
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, clearly the reason would be, I I agree they have to have a reason, but with the way the conditions are written here, w- it's too, yeah, it it's it's, yeah.
So there's nothing there, yeah, that's just
So I don't know if I can make a recommendation that uh we direct uh 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 that our committee, the whole, uh directs administration to review with legal and bring back to our uh December meeting, how's that?
Perfect.
There you go.
Yeah.
You need one extra word, then the off-site levy. Then it refers to all the things above.
Mm-hmm.
The moment it looks like a sticky on on D
Yeah.
and it isn't, it's referring to all of those, so if you fit into A, B, C, or D, then the off-site levy can be refunded within twelve months.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean it's badly written, but it makes sense.
Yeah. So that's my motion.
Deputy Mayor Holliday?
Yeah, I know that we were trying to align specifically with Black Diamond, but there was a lot of discussion about the payment, the fifty percent, you know, and then fifty percent one year, and I wanted to make sure that that at least was consistent.
Yes.
And that I thought there would be some feedback at when they did their public engagement, has anyone heard that? What's been done there? Can you ask the J F A C?
Yeah, per per off-site levies and and it's, they used to do it in three payments.
Yeah, I'm I'm well aware.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I believe the direction was that it was fifty down, fifty after a year, and to my knowledge they didn't they didn't diverge from that particular.
Mm-hmm.
We can check real quickly here.
I think we I think we can.
Get, I would get clarification, 'cause that was a sticky point.
The D.
Was it fifty fifty like we asked? Yeah, we agreed at J F A C would be fifty fifty, not not three payments.
Fifty fifty, yeah.
Fifty, yeah.
Yeah, J F A C agreed fifty fifty.
That's correct, that's what I suggested.
Yeah, yeah.
So what did Black Diamond do?
Well, they were gonna do fifty fifty, but they started up pushback.
As far as I know, they went fifty fifty, but.
No.
Councilor Robb?
We do know that these bylaws, these two bylaws, one here, one in Turner Valley, will definitely need to be uh brought together sometime with new councils, so we'll write it the way we see fit and then we'll take it from there and uh the new council make the necessary changes. 'Cause it definitely, they can't be two thirds forever in the same community.
No, no.
Richard, we're actually checking.
Okay.
Slowly.
It's a big package, right?
I guess after the two, three percent piece, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have Lisa checking, you know, the town of Black Diamonds off-site levy bylaw.
Yeah, we're just looking, yeah. I mean, and if I might, so when we have these conversations at J F A C and there's an agreement amongst the councils?
Mm-hmm.
I've got one on one, I'll check.
If one council chooses to diverge from that, I guess that is their
Their prerogative.
their prerogative, but it does make things more challenging down the road. And these should be reviewed regularly,
Mm-hmm.
but they're an expensive bylaw to review as well, so we wanna be cautious with it. We actually started ours prior to Black Diamond starting their process, so uh this was a sticky one, but there was no question both parties needed to update those bylaws dramatically. This might take a a little longer, and they've already passed theirs, so it is what it is, and I don't know that we would wanna change too much from that fifty fifty approach.
Yeah.
And we collected all of ours on one instance, so I think that was a relatively good compromise that J F A C had helped to that's the companies.
Oddly enough oddly enough, guys, I just read the entire section here on off-site levies in M G A and references zero where we have to have a refund penalty. Just how to fund it and reporting required, so interesting. So, yeah.
This needs to be treated.
Yeah.
I find my motions on the table.
That's what it, motion is this, here we are.
I don't think we're gonna get there.
Call the question.
So Councilor Gordon?
Yeah, just, yeah, we'll just redirect it back to legal and make sure we're s- we're covered on that instance and we can now give us time to check the Black Diamonds bylaw too.
Yeah.
It's
Yeah.
So what is the recommendation?
Motion, Councilor Gordon, your motion.
Lisa's guy, she can reread it.
That the committee directs administration to consult with our legal regarding the off-site levy bylaw return of I didn't word that properly.
Payback.
The refund.
Refund the payment.
Refund. Refund that's found in the section A.
Refund the payment.
Yep.
And bring it back to the December seventh meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Try and do three things here, so
So all in favor? Carrie? Okay, old business, five point one art and sculptures, Mayor Crane?
Oh. Well, uh so far, uh no new news from uh my friend Mister Pyra, however, I have had a nice get-together with um local artist Jasmine Abbey and her husband Mitch. And so uh they have a beautiful sculpture um that they're looking at potentially donating, we would just have to find some land, so but our big thrust is with Mister Pyra and no report from him, therefore, uh steady as she goes. Um and I think maybe uh once we form into Diamond Valley, if I have the pleasure of being at the chair with some of you fine folks, then maybe a committee can be formed and we can properly go ahead uh and rally the troops of the both sides of the river and really look at art around the entire community of Diamond Valley, so. Until then, uh just conversations are being had, so no need to add it to any agenda from here till Diamond Valley's formed and a committee could be formed. Thank you.
So if I might, yeah, both both have the fifty percent payment and uh fifty percent down, fifty percent out, here.
Okay.
Yeah. Excellent.
Good.
Then we will check into that, and and if I might on the on the statue issue, so we actually spent some time this week at at our management group, actually I guess it was Thursday
Hmm.
it's days and the weeks, at our management meeting last week because Mister Beaton had received a draft of the sculpture, seven foot tall, da-da-da-da, and you know, da-da, it was gonna need to have some finishing and and we assumed it was Mister Pyra.
Mm-hmm.
So after we spoke to him for, you know, half a hour, where would we put it, does it fit Turner Valley's flavor, you know, da-da-da-da-da. Craig discovered later that day that it was actually sent to him completely by accident by somebody who's completely empty knows to this.
Oh dear.
That's funny.
Yeah, but if if it hadn't have been for the Pyra conversation, we wouldn't, we would've just tossed it, but yeah, we thought it was, that must've been better. So you don't have a seven foot alien look-alike kinda statue coming to Turner Valley.
So Mayor Crane, would you like to ask that this get put onto the list of
Uh
No.
No, I think it's 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 sitting where it needs to sit right now, it's just on the
No. Okay.
We've got murals on the list, so it could most probably come up when that comes up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Murals in art, it it needs to fall into a a nurge, so, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, item number six point one, the action log to October nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, does everyone have a chance to go through that?
Yeah, we have others on that list.
Twenty-two ten nineteen oh seven is here, we just talked about it.
Yeah.
So I have a question on item number twenty-two dot zero seven dot two zero dot two six, that council uh provide a letter of support for the National Police Federation Call to Action.
I can't recall if I signed one or not.
So that goes back to July twentieth of twenty twenty?
Mm-hmm.
It didn't mark it off as complete, 'cause I
I don't, 'cause we saw it signed so many of it.
It is complete?
I know, I didn't mark it as complete, 'cause I had to go check whether we had done it or not, so.
In two seconds, I will look. I'm gonna double check, 'cause I'm sure we sent that. And is that
There's one, there's one other one as well.
Councilor Dixon?
Yeah, um item twenty-two dot ten dot zero five dot one five, um which in regards to signing authority. Um if I understand correctly, that was uh um disallowed by uh uh Urban Affairs, correct? So I'm just wondering what, if there's an update there or or we're around with that thing.
If I might then, through Chair Martin? Uh yeah, they were disallowed on both sides actually because of the reference to Diamond Valley. And uh we weren't required to do anything, including rescind, because they had just been not allowed, so they formally don't. Um we did meet with Municipal Affairs this afternoon, we had our hour and a half sort of monthly pickup meeting. Uh Black Diamond had to provide new motions to add us as signatories on their bank account,
Mm-hmm.
which dealt with the issue. Um however, they did suggest that we could rescind the motions formally, so it was noted in the minutes, but officially they don't exist any longer, so so we could we could rescind them, but the issue has been taken care of and those motions have been in fact passed.
So item number twenty-one dot zero nine dot zero seven one four
What was that?
um dated July seventh, or September seventh, pardon me, twenty twenty-one, that council directs administration to contact Alberta Transportation with a request to reduce the speed limit on all highways within the town of Turner Valley?
I don't believe that letter ever was sent, but I'm laughing because there was two I was questioning and you picked both of them right out of the air, so well done. Uh the first letter actually was sent.
For the police federation?
Correct, but I don't believe the second letter was sent and and I'm trying to recall why at the time because
Yeah.
We didn't actually
it might have something to do with the issue of highway speed between both municipalities so that they matched and where there wasn't a differential, but I would have to look at that.
Yeah, we pulled That's exactly it. That's exactly it.
Councilor Rob?
That's my recollection, C E O patience, that we talked about it and realized we didn't really have the authority to do it, so you were gonna follow up, but you said what's the point because we're gonna ran into a roadblock and I see Mayor Crane shaking his head because he'd have been the one to send the letter, so uh and that's my recollection as well, there was you're you're beating a dead horse, you couldn't do it.
That's all I have as well.
This move, this move.
And the last item, uh I pardon me, it's one of the last, is uh dated June seventh, twenty twenty one, twenty one oh six oh seven fifteen, that council directs administration to enter into the Eden Valley Fire Assistance Agreement with Stony Na- with uh Stony Nation.
This is all in their hands and has been since then. We've agreed to it, but they have never sent us a final copy for signatures, so. Indiana, I know, has asked them multiple times, so.
So are you still required to provide fire service?
We have been, as has foothills, as has
Everybody else.
Yes.
Hmm.
Okay.
So this was a mutual aid agreement essentially, right? We do typically do it and um this really just applies to the charges that we would provide them in the case of a mutual aid requirement, and it was actually their agreement, but as is the case with the park naming, those things are coming very slow.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just a um it's just something I would I think maybe goes on to the shortlist for the new council is Friends of the Pool donated thirty-two thousand in twenty twenty towards the shade sales for the spray park and the canopies for the spectac- uh spectacular
Mm-hmm.
area. And the canopies have been put up, friends met with Craig in August and we did talk about where the shade sale would go. Can we ju- should can we put this on this log or is it best just to put it on the shortlist?
Um. Councilor, Chair Martin, you may do whatever you'd certainly like with that. Honestly, I know Craig was given direction to meet directly with them to find out exactly what they wanted. I know that's taken place, I would have to get an update, but you know, in terms of where it is today, 'cause I don't know where it is off the top of my head. Um I don't think it'll be lost and shouldn't be lost because it was a contribution for a specific piece of work and but it doesn't hurt to keep it near the surface, so it doesn't get pushed to the side, especially through all of this right now, so however you'd like to deal with that, I'm kind of.
May I may I ask that it is put onto the action log?
All you would need is a motion in council and then it it will, all motions will go onto the action log.
Okay, so this is a recommendation?
No, this this one.
In council.
Not at this meeting, it has to be a council.
No. No.
No, these ones go on with her, so.
Oh, do they? Okay, I thought.
Yeah, so just it's a direction for the administration.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
So we're recommending a recommendation to for a direction to administration to add the purchase of the shade sales um for the spray park.
To the to do list for the new municipality?
Do to the do list, yep.
Perfect.
For twenty twenty-three?
Perfect.
Identify the funds.
Pardon?
Identify the funds in that motion.
Uh so the ori- original donated amount was, I believe, thirty-two thousand, a portion has been used for the canopies, I believe there's about twenty-seven thousand remaining.
And the donor.
Is that in favor?
Yep, we'll just go there, yeah.
All in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Uh Councilor Rob is holding back. Carried. Okay, our December meetings, council meeting of the whole is has been cancelled for December?
Nope.
Nope, nope.
Nope.
I'm asking if you wanna cancel.
The question I think is to do we wanna cancel, I assume that's what that was there for?
We wanted to move it to the twentieth.
No, that was the council, I think it was the twentieth, that would've been on the thirteenth.
But that's great.
That's council meeting. We talked about committee of the whole.
No, yeah.
Do we need a committee of the whole in November, in December?
In December.
I would say no. It depends how much has to get done before we shut down at the end of the year, doesn't it?
You know, no, you can't say you can't you can't say it last year, you know.
Yeah.
Cancel it, yeah.
I I'd cancel it, I'd cancel it and then if I had to have a meeting, I'd make it a special meeting, a council, then you could make decisions.
See the word is.
Could do that too.
Three.
Uh.
That's actually another idea, that's that's.
Yeah, 'cause I'm gonna make the decisions.
Uh that could be there.
See, that's the eight years' experience coming out of that.
I like that thinking, yeah. Councilor Hall, they couldn't chair it, but.
Yeah, I'm just wondering capital budget, are we jamming that into a council meeting? I would have expected committee of the whole being like, are we gonna as well as talking about reserve contributions, um how we're what we're setting aside that earmarking for what going into amalgamation? Those are the two bid and contract propositions I had expected to be at committee of the whole. I don't care what date it's on, so special meeting on spot, I I and but
I think not those discussions anywhere in council.
I'm just worried about putting big budget discussion type items into a council meeting.
C E O patience?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Martin. Um d as an F O A, I believe uh Ms. Middleton actually has an R F D prepping for your council meeting as an introduction to the interim budget that will then come back in December for final approval, so uh we can perhaps discuss that at the council meeting in terms of how you would like to work through those capital pieces of that particular budget.
Councilor Rory?
At at a council meeting, you can break out to the council meeting and go into a cow, discuss it what the hell you like and then go back into your council meeting, so that's an option if we needed it.
Councilor Rob?
I would like us to leave this meeting date, call it what you will, but uh because we may or may not need it, if we don't need it, we can certainly cancel it within a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
But we'll see what our meeting brings next week, we have a council meeting next week, we'll have an idea of how heavy the agenda's gonna be. So leave it there and we can always cancel later date if we don't need it.
Yep.
Nobody needs extra meetings, so let's quit it because of meetings.
You 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 need extra to catch up, 'cause you don't, I'm gonna need to get after this.
And uh that ends that, we don't need to do anything.
So, Councilor Rob?
What's that?
Oh, you raised your hand.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm just scratching my side of my head here. It's close.
Mayor Crane?
Uh yes, Chair Martin, um no actions required as we're not going to move anything or cancel anything or reschedule, so we can leave that and uh maybe I'd just suggest a recess before we do our in-camera session.
Okay.
What about December twentieth, is that twenty-first, is that uh?
First.
I'd made the request that we move it one day because I'm not I'm going away on the twenty-first, but I mean, it's the last it's the last council meeting of this council, which I didn't realize when I made my arrangements. So if you wanna leave it the way it is, that's fine, and if you could move it one day, that's also fine.
I'm fine.
We'll do the Monday that week.
I'm fine. Doesn't matter.
Better Monday or Tuesday.
I guess we leave it 'cause it's sort of scheduled, it's a lot less hassle.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
No problem.
Anything else? So can we just call a five minute or ten minute recess before we go into closed session?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Accept the action for information, I'll give you that motion.
Councilor Gordon gives us pardon me? Um to accept as information, all in favor? Carrie?
Enough recess.
Uh can we go into a ten minute recess before we go into a closed session?
But.
We can.
Hang tight, it's in the ten minutes.
It says there's no closed session though.
No, we wouldn't go in.
I read that, I I read that, you.
No.
I read that. I I read that, you